Joining us, we'll start this meeting in just a moment. We have an overflow crowd today. All right, we're on air, we are ready. Let me just note for the record that our county manager is not able to be with us today, and acting in his stead is Assistant County Manager Mike Calagie. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll just note that I let County Manager Maltby know that we would spend all the money before he got back.
Yeah. Is there a motion for that? Okay. Very good. If you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds, for all.
Thank you all. These flowers smell so good up here. We should do this every week. Could you call the roll, please, Ms. Clerk?
Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
President Slocum?
Here. Thank you. And we'll move now to public comment. Do we have public comment charts?
Yes, we do. The public comment is reserved for persons wishing to address the Board on county-related matters that are not otherwise on this agenda, as well as items that are listed on the consent agenda. People will be provided two minutes to speak, and an extension will be granted at the discretion of the Board President. So first, we have Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the Board. My fellow veteran is absent, Mr. Maltby. And welcome, Mr. Calagie, and County Councilman, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county, and thank you for not only authorizing assisted outpatient treatment known as Laura's Law, but for appropriating the funds to implement Laura's Law. Please establish a private defender program oversight committee, as your absent county manager has recommended. A California attorney-of-law firm who provides a defendant in any proceeding with representation that is paid for by another has not one, but two clients, and has duties to both clients. The intellectually and morally bankrupt nature of the San Mateo County Bar Association's private defender program was evident by the deceptive testimony the association's proponents made during your last meeting, suggesting they had no duties to anyone else, including San Mateo County and its duly-elected representatives. The intellectually and morally bankrupt nature of the San Mateo County Bar Association's private defender program first came to my attention when I represented the parents of a criminal justice system-involved adult child living with serious mental illness, and was told by one of the private defenders who testified at your meeting last time that he would oppose the parent's recommendation that a court order for treatment for their child would not be sought because he didn't need it, and because he didn't care whether his client reoffended. Since I met that despicable private defender more than six years ago, I have witnessed other private defenders treat similarly situated parents with even more outrageous audacity. The consenting audacity of the private defender program testimony at your last meeting reflects a disdain for the risks to public safety posed by the recidivism of persons living with serious mental illness. Please establish a private defender program oversight committee, as your county manager has recommended, and harness the private defender's $19 million pig that has been feeding at the public expense for 47 years.
Next, we have Brent Turner, followed by Sarah Hareshi.
I put a packet of information in front of you this morning. I'm sure we've all witnessed now that the information is on point with the news of the day regarding the election systems and the national security issues. We will be, just to let you know, again on NBC Tonight at 11 o'clock for the second of the two-part series, this one dealing more with solutions that I've presented. And we're looking forward to having some interviews conducted for the national NBC Network, as well as 60 Minutes from CBS. Luckily, in our county, we have President Slocum as one of the foremost experts regarding election systems and security. So we're looking forward to expediting the solution through our proud county. Based on the Department of Homeland Security's announced election system security crisis, San Mateo County should immediately, one, resolve to join the California Association of Voting Officials as a participant member, and join San Francisco County in the formative open-source voting project; two, allocate all necessary funds and/or resources to the Department of Elections as needed for additional staffing for available open-source software systems; and three, allocate all necessary funds and/or resources to the Department of Elections as needed for obtaining state certification of available open-source systems. These minor steps will position San Mateo County as a leader toward best election practices. The technology to secure the systems are available, and will create massive long-term cost savings. I appreciate your attention to this matter. We're looking forward to working with San Mateo County, and we hope you reach out to San Francisco County immediately. Thank you.
Next, we have Sarah Hareshi, followed by Latitia Nakoneki.
Hi, thank you for having me today. I'm here on behalf of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, which is a trade organization that represents many of Silicon Valley's biggest businesses, and we work on issues of economic vitality and health. But we also have a foundation arm that puts on 5K and 10K races throughout the year to raise funds for local nonprofits, one of which is a turkey trot, which is one of the largest in the nation. And as part of that, we have a Mayor's Cup, which is a competition among cities to increase participation from our council members, and mayors, and city managers. So I wanted to be here today to personally invite you all to participate. You would be competing against cities with the same size for the prized Mayor's Cup trophy, and all of these funds go right back to local charities, like the Second Harvest Food Bank, the Housing Trust, and the Health Trust. So we hope you all can make it out, and I've brought some flyers as well for more information for you to distribute. Thank you so much.
Next, we have public comments regarding Consent Item 30. Latitia Nakoneki and Mary Monroe. Apologize.
Good morning, Mrs. Slocum, and everybody on the Board. I'm here from the Latino Commission. In behalf of Deborah Camarillo, our Executive Director, I would like to thank you in advance for Item 30. The Latino Commission helps men and women get back into recovery and become useful members of society again. Our main purpose is to reunite parents and their children, and for that, we are successful in many instances. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Mary Monroe, and I'm here on behalf of the Latino Commission. It's a great day, and by the grace of God, I am here to testify for them. As a consumer, they have changed my life. From April 2014 to today, I'm enrolled in college. I am getting my A degree. In 2014, I was living in my car, being abused by someone, and hooked on drugs. So I have heart for this program. I've seen hundreds of people go through their program. I am now not only a past consumer, but I am an inspiration to others, and I'm here because I'm really, really excited about what's happening. Not only will it defer incarcerations, but it gives a permanent presence and a voice to the Latino Commission that they are dedicated and here in the community to serve the community and many people in it. They're here as a long-term presence, and I'm just glad to be here. I'm very excited. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And next, we have Laura O'Leary, speaking on Consent Item 31.
Good morning. My name is Laura O'Leary. Excuse me. I'm the Senior Stewardship Project Manager with Peninsula Open Space Trust. Just wanted to speak to Item 31 on the consent agenda, the resolution authorizing the Department of Housing to execute a loan agreement between Post, with Post and Blue House Farm in the county, to replace two farm labor housing units in San Gregorio. I just want to acknowledge Supervisor Horsley's leadership and the Board of Supervisors' support of the Farm Worker Housing Rehabilitation Pilot Program to replace existing dilapidated mobile home units to serve as farm labor housing. Post is excited to partner with the county on this important issue. Ryan Casey, the owner of Blue House Farm, couldn't be here today, but asked me to express his gratitude for the program, saying that he couldn't do this without the support of the county. So thank you for your consideration of this loan to address the critical shortage of farm labor housing. Providing these resources to improve housing is a necessary and important step in maintaining agriculture on the coast. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the last public comment speaker.
Next item is action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. I would like to make a request that we pull Item Number 9 from the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda and place Item Number 9 on the regular agenda and approve the consent agenda.
Also, if—
And, Mr. President, I'd like to mention for Item Number 2, it's a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2018, as mentioned in the memo and the resolution.
Okay.
And also, I had a question concerning the Assessor County Clerk items. I'm in favor of the items, but I did have a question about them.
And before we approve it, I would like to make comments on Items Number 26 and 27, but not just before we approve them.
Should I go ahead and pose my question now, or—
Sure.
I don't know if anyone from the Assessor's office is here this morning, but Items 14 through 17, as the Board's aware, the state is encouraging school districts to move their elections from odd years to even years when there's a higher voter turnout. And I guess my question, maybe Mr. Calagie can bring this back to the Assessor's office, is I'm curious to know, you know, what school districts are going to be left remaining in the odd years, and how we're going to handle the costs for those districts? Because, you know, typically, we allocate the costs depending on the number of items, the number of elections in a cycle. So like in this particular, 14, so four districts right here, and I know we've done some in the past, they're all moving. So, you know, who's left in the odd years, and how, you know, are we going to be charging them more? I hope not, because if we are, we should give them some warning. So that's just, maybe you could bring that to Mr. Church.
Absolutely. I'll bring that to Mr. Church, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. Supervisor Groom?
Thank you. I would like on Items Number— Keep turning the wrong page. —26 and 27, I asked Mr. Maltby and Mr. Esrell to put these on the thing, on our agenda today. There's a number of state propositions on the upcoming ballot. There are all important issues, but two of them are especially important to our county. The first is Proposition 56, which is the cigarette tax to fund healthcare tobacco use and prevention programs. It will provide more money in our county for breast cancer support, as well as first five. So we're going to adopt a resolution in support of Proposition 56. We're also going to ask you to adopt a resolution in opposition to Proposition 53, which is a revenue bond statewide or vote initiative that requires any bonds to exceed $2 billion to go to a statewide ballot. CSAC and other organizations are opposed to that. It could have effect for us on Caltrain and other transportation issues, as well as our housing look for the next 20 to 30 years. So I would ask that we oppose 53 and support 56. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Supervisor Groom. Did we have—
Yeah, go ahead. You know, just, I was bringing up to my, what Supervisor Pine's comment about the Assessor County Clerk, you know, of Mike Calagie, you know, that one of the things we're going to have to do with Pescadero is we're going to have to do a county-wide election to change the LCP in Pescadero because of the fact that, you know, we built the fire station. It's incredible as it seems that we have to actually go back to 1980s, I think it was called Measure A or something at the time, that established the urban-rural boundary. So, you know, by having all, every jurisdiction go, come out of the odd numbers, it's going to have an impact when people or agencies like us have to go in an odd year, because we're going to end up bearing the entire cost. And it could also happen to other special districts as well. So I don't think anybody's really thought this one through.
That's a good point, Supervisor Horsley. I'll look into that.
Thanks.
Mr. Calagie, we're joined by Mr. Church. If there's no objection, maybe he could address Supervisor Pine's concern. Mr. Church?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
My question concerns, as of course you're well aware, the school districts are moving their, many of them are moving their elections to the even number of years. So I was curious to know, will there still be school districts in the odd number of years? In other words, some of them perhaps may be staying with the odd number of years? And if so, you know, what will happen to their election costs? Because it's my understanding that, you know, typically, election costs are spread across the jurisdictions, all the jurisdictions on a particular, in a particular ballot cycle. So obviously, we'll have considerably fewer now in the odd years because of this change. So again, to summarize, are there school districts remaining in the odd years? And if so, how will we bill them for ballot costs?
Supervisor Pine, currently, we have 38 jurisdictions in odd-numbered years, and we have 29 in even-numbered years. There are a number of school districts that are still in the odd number of years, and they have until January of 2018 to submit a plan whereby they would transfer to the even-numbered year by November of 2022. And so there are a number of them that still remain, and as more jurisdictions transfer to the even-numbered year, it is likely that the cost for the other remaining jurisdictions in the odd number of years will increase.
Perhaps we can discuss more of it offline, but we may want to notify those districts because if they have the choice to move, they may be concerned about that.
We are in the process of developing a plan to notify each of the remaining jurisdictions of SB 415, the requirements of SB 415, and the impacts that will likely occur if they don't transfer.
Thank you.
Now, there are also impacts on the elections, the registration and elections division, which we can discuss at your convenience.
Thanks, Mr. Church.
Just one quick question. If, supposing everybody moves, every jurisdiction, special district, school districts move to even elections, is it possible to schedule one in an odd number if we had to for some unforeseen reason?
I'm sorry, is it possible?
If, yeah, right. If all districts and all elections for school districts, special districts, go to even-numbered elections, would it still be possible to have a special election in an odd-numbered year?
Yes, it will still be possible, and it will be likely that there will be probably a number of special elections in odd-numbered years, because there are several parcel taxes with the school districts that expire in the odd-numbered year. And so to renew those would most likely occur in an odd-numbered year with a special election.
And maybe I could jump in for a moment. So SB 415, to be clear, only applies to elections for governing board members, as opposed to measures, for example.
Thank you. Thanks.
So I, and I think there is, under the existing law, if I might just add something, Mr. President, the impacts are to be considered by the Board. So currently, under existing law, under Elections Code 10402.5, jurisdictions have the right to transfer now, prior to SB 415. But the transfer is contingent on the Board approving the transfer based on the finding that there are no adverse impacts on the election process. I'm not sure yet how that plays into SB 415, so we're in the process of reviewing that with County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Assessor while he's here? No? Thank you, Mr. Church.
Thank you.
Can I, I have to amend the motion. Item Number 9 is actually removed from the agenda, as opposed, I said, in that case, remove it from the agenda. So that's my amended motion.
Is that—
Is that clear?
Is that legal?
Perfectly legal.
Okay. Very good. So there's an amended motion on the floor here.
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Now, we've set the agenda, and we're going to move on to presentations and awards at this point in time. And our first item there, Item Number 1, is a poetry reading by Caroline Goodwin, San Mateo County's poet laureate, as we all know. She's been with us before many times during the past couple of years. And this morning, as part of her duties as San Mateo County's poet laureate, Caroline is going to open our board meeting with her reading. By the way, it's her last reading as San Mateo County's poet laureate, we're sad to say. And the subject of that poem, she'll describe in just a moment, but Caroline, obviously, the Board and the residents of San Mateo County, and all the poetry lovers in San Mateo County have really appreciated your tireless efforts to bring poetry to everybody in the community. As I look back on the last couple of years, we've had some amazing poetry receptions at the libraries, and we want to thank our San Mateo County Librarian Anne Marie de Spain for hosting those events. And obviously, for our next poet laureate, you've set a high bar, and we've all just been so impressed with the things that you've achieved during your tenure. And, excuse me. I have these flowers for you, but I'm thinking about keeping them, actually. No, I'm just kidding. But I'm wondering if you could go to the podium at this point and read us one of your poems. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum, and thanks, everyone, for being here. And poetry in San Mateo County is just amazing, and it's a beautiful place where we live. So many different voices and languages and cultures in this small place on the planet. I think it's just so abundant, and I'm really grateful that you've made this formal space for poetry. It's, you know, poets, we kind of labor on our own in the little pockets of solitude and pain. And to have my work featured regularly and have a receptive and attentive audience has been really a beautiful thing for me. So thank you. And I know that the next poet laureate's going to continue to, with your support, build this poet laureate program that you've started, that you've started and supported over the last couple of years. So there's a little, just a little about this poem, which I usually give, but I have a good friend, Rebecca Bloyd, who lives in San Jose and has been, you know, supported me in my efforts as a writer, and just a person and a friend. So this is a poem about a time we spent together about a year ago. So it's called "For Rebecca." Friend, there is nothing like this bay, quiet fern, cool spot on the back of the hand. And this next stanza is actually Rebecca's, these are Rebecca's words that I stole. Tonight, the water surface reflects the smoky rose, and the day passes, and what can I show for it? Oh, cone-bearing incense, cedar, western yew, and birch, a bright gold band inside that clamshell and thistle, this flycatcher, that turkey vulture circling the field. Where we ascend the old stairs, the lichen at work at its trumpets and cups and lobes, and we set out to explore our own thoughts, two friends at their desks, two junkos in the alders, a few lines of a poem, and what mystery reveals itself? Rose-shaped, so slowly, in the mind, in the daylight, bending away. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Don't sit down yet. I just wanted to make one quick announcement. The next poetry event that we're holding is Poetry is Nature. And we've had a series of these events, Poetry is Love, Poetry is Family, Poetry is Diversity, and so forth and so on. So the next one upcoming is Poetry is Nature, and it's a celebration, obviously, of the beautiful area that we call home here in San Mateo County. And I just want to note for you all that there were some 200 poems submitted for this event, 200. And they came from grade schoolers all the way up to adults, as I understand.
Seniors, yes.
And seniors. And there's going to be a reception and a poetry reading of the selected poems on Saturday, October 15th, at the Woodside Library. And if you haven't been there, it's a really gorgeous facility, and it would invite you all to come. And now, I would ask my colleague Supervisor Carol Groom to join me in presenting these beautiful flowers to you.
Thank you. She's got to tell me where to go. Do I go over there? Okay. Thank you.
And we're going to introduce our second San Mateo County poet laureate to you all. Her name is Lisa Rosenberg, and she's going to have a two-year term, which is going to start, I believe, on January 1st, 2017, and run for two years. And we do need a motion on this, so I'll make the motion that, first of all, before I forget, we appoint Lisa Rosenberg as San Mateo County's honorary poet laureate.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now that's official. So we have really a wonderful poet laureate advisory committee that's made up of poets, writers, elected officials, our library director, and co-chaired by Supervisor Groom. And we've met many, many times, and this go-around in selecting the new poet laureate, we received eight applications for the post, and we actually interviewed five of those eight. And we want to thank all the applicants and finalists for coming to the— for coming to the interviews and reading poetry before us. I know it was probably pretty nerve-wracking for everybody, but we appreciate that. So a little bit about Lisa, and I should say, before I do that, that there are members of the poet, poetry advisory committee here. And I'm not going to introduce them all, but maybe, I think they're in the back row. Could you just stand and be recognized and thanked? There they are. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Lisa Rosenberg, second poet laureate, as I said, we've dubbed her, we've dubbed her the Scientist Poet. Scientist poet. Why do we do that? Well, she graduated from the University of California, Davis, with a BS degree in physics. Now, how you go from physics to poetry, I'm not quite sure, but that's the way it is. And she minored in French. Somewhere along her way in college, Lisa's love of the written word became her driving force, and she earned a master's degree in creative writing from Boston University. Lisa was also, like Caroline, a Wallace Stigner Fellow in poetry at Stanford University. In addition to physics and aerospace engineering, Lisa's professional experience includes technology marketing, freelance design, instruction, and creative writing. And for many years, she was a private pilot. I'm not sure that she still is, but she did do a lot of flying. Her writing appears in literary, technical, and scientific venues from poetry anthologies to journals as diverse as The Three Penny Review, Poetry Shenandoah Witness, and Semiconductor International. Scientist poet. Lisa resides with her family in Menlo Park. And joining her in the audience, I think, is her husband, Mike, and her daughter, Zoe. And if you both could stand up and be recognized, we'd appreciate- and mother. Mom's here. Sandra. Thank you. Now, as Caroline can attest, poetry, being poet laureate, does consume a fair amount of time. And we just want to thank the family for giving us our second poet laureate, Lisa Rosenberg. We appreciate, we appreciate that. Thank you. So now, please join me in welcoming our next poet laureate. And I know that you have a reading this morning for us, I think. So if you'd go to the podium, we'll sit back and relax and enjoy this, this poem.
Hi. Thank you to the board, and thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I want to thank and also commend the board for joining in a very longstanding, old tradition, going back to England and being among those communities that officially appoint someone from within the community to be both an advocate for people within the community and an ambassador, looking outward to other communities through the medium of poetry. As a poet, I'm more on the extrovert end of the spectrum. It goes both extremes. So like Caroline, having the opportunity, an official capacity, to be asked to share my work, to be in the community, out in schools, and with people from all different backgrounds, walks of life, to talk about writing is really quite like a dream come true. So it's, it's the kind of opportunity that many poets seek, and I feel very fortunate to receive. I started my professional working life in an environment where words could be very tightly controlled. It was a conundrum for me. And so the poem that I've selected to read today comes from that world. It's called "The Satellite Sky." Do I need to move closer to this mic? No? Okay. "The Satellite Sky." As we dine, the satellites spin. We work and sleep. They pass the rim of a village, blank with snow. Everywhere the day unfolds. A monkey flinches in the banyan limbs at the lip of a southern continent. A missile stack, the stormy ice path beneath the woven sky of satellites. Several hundred artificial sisters to the moon. Their turning drums, petals splayed, antennae like radiant stamens. The bulbous roots of others pace along their gentle arcs, relay a voice in numbers. Return to us the likes of forestation, sea ice, smoke. The good people of one country indistinguishable from the next. My metal desk, a drop in the metropolis. The great birds glide in their orbits, fan themselves, jeweled heads humming in a stream of signals. What moves at the center of their gas hearts? Delicate as a pistol? They are the Ptolemaic angels of the age, deities simple as stars. Beneath the lenses of their tempered eyes, a launch site slumbers. A combine rusts in a field of weeds I entered in a dream, knowing if I brought my words to the marsh at its far edge, still, I could tell no one, not even the reeds. So the journey from that place to this one has been full of wonder and delight. Thank you.
Well, we're so appreciative of you accepting the assignment of San Mateo County's poet laureate. And on behalf of my colleagues on the board, I know we're all looking forward to a very exciting year. And Caroline, thank you again for everything that you've done for us. And now I'd ask my colleague Supervisor Groom to join me in the presentation of flowers.
Caroline, my heart and deep, deep thanks to you for honoring this person with incredible generosity and praise.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Caroline. We're going to move on to item number three, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating October 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm guessing we needed a motion on the proclamation, so I'll make the motion to designate October 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. So October this month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I just want to start off by saying that we had a wonderful event last night at Cora headquarters in San Mateo. And we were joined by Sheriff Bolanos and Assistant County Manager, Mike Callagie. And the program was Voices Not Forgotten, a remembrance event for those lost to domestic violence. And while it was a small group that gathered, there was original poetry. There was an original song presented by a man and a woman who were just beautiful singers. And it was just a great program, an emotional and sad program, obviously, because of the subject. But I was pleased to be invited and to say a few words. So just wanted you all to know that. Domestic violence, as we've talked about before, is the leading cause of injury to women between the ages of 18 and 44 years old. Almost one-third, almost one-third of women experience physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. In San Mateo County, over 10,000 residents have received assistance through Cora's 24-hour hotline or law enforcement referrals. 316 adult San Mateo County residents were provided with emergency shelter and transitional housing to escape their abusers. 554 adults and their children, and their children, received therapy to help them with their domestic violence-related traumas in San Mateo County. And nearly 2,300 requests for services were fielded by Cora's legal team. I just would mention that we're going to have a resource fair from 11:00 AM today to 1:00 PM in the courtyard, where everybody could learn more about the topic of domestic violence and how it affects family in San Mateo County. Today. It's today from 11:00 to 1:00 in the courtyard. So at this point, I'd like to ask that we just take a moment of silence to remember the victims of domestic violence. Thank you. So let me, I, I haven't seen Melissa Lucan. Is she in the audience? There she is. Okay, I would introduce to you Melissa Lucan, the Executive Director of Cora, which is Community Overcoming Abuse. And she's the Vice Chair of the Domestic Violence Council. And maybe we could ask Melissa to say a few words. And after she's concluded, we'll present you with the, with the proclamation. So Melissa?
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Callie, Mr. Beers. I feel as though Lisa and Ms. Goodwin have sort of raised the bar. I should do this as poetry, but I'll do the best I can. Thank you for focusing this morning on this particularly important social justice issue. You know, it was 40 years ago that a couple of folks with a dream opened a shelter. It's the same shelter that we used to house those hundreds of survivors of domestic violence and their children in the past year, and those 12,000 residents, actually, who called our 24-hour hotline. Also, they are referred by law enforcement through our emergency response program, which is partially funded through the county and the cities. They received support from specially-trained counselors who understand the complex dynamics of domestic violence, can recognize the danger signs, can provide safety planning for those who aren't ready to flee, and housing for those who are. But not only that, but they were offered an array of services, as you heard, which are critical to creating new lives. But we couldn't do it alone. The increase in safety and support for survivors and accountability for batters over the years comes out of the genuine development of effective collaborations. These collaborations include other community-based organizations, Star Vista's differential response, our collaboration with the TRO clinic through ABLA, HIP Housing's important services in terms of affordable housing, and our collaboration with the Housing Department, who have undergone significant and successful receiving of funds from the feds for, for housing and inclusion of domestic violence as a critical issue for this particular homeless population. The DA, who regularly, and his staff, who provides creative and passionate and expert approach to the issue of domestic violence and accountability. Law enforcement's empathy, their insistence on going above and beyond. I could go on and on. It really is those collaborations that make the difference. And in addition, we had an audit this last couple of years, which concluded a collaboration between the Sheriff's Department, the Daly City Law Enforcement, San Mateo Law Enforcement, Redwood City Law Enforcement, and others, that actually transchanged our law enforcement protocol to include the interviewing of children on the scene at DV calls, contextual questions that would address issues of danger on the scene and assessing that, and also enhancing our translation services. In addition, over the past year, we've been able to expand our outreach to the LGBTQ population, to teens, to child witnesses in particular, and also to the physically challenged. The core of our work, though, of course, hasn't changed over the past 40 years. Our fundamental assessment and assumption that everyone has the right not to be afraid or otherwise abused at home by those who claim to love them. So together, I'm very pleased and very proud and very grateful that we are breaking the silence and interrupting the intergenerational cycle of violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, moving on. Item number four is a presentation of a resolution honoring Monica Castellon and Lupe Oropezza, forgive me if I've mispronounced your names, as the recipients of the Barbara Hammerman Award this year. Congratulations to both of you. And we do, I'll make the motion, actually, that we approve the resolutions for Monica and Lupe.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Let me just share a few thoughts with you about the Barbara Hammerman Award. It's an annual award that was inspired by the late San Mateo County, San Mateo City Police Lieutenant Barbara Hammerman. It was established in 2005 by the Domestic Violence Council of San Mateo County to recognize the work of exceptional law enforcement officers in San Mateo County who excel in the service of, to domestic violence survivors and their families, and especially their children. But the award now recognizes other non-sworn members of the criminal justice and victim advocacy community who serve domestic violence clients. Some past recipients of the Barbara Hammerman Award include San Mateo Police Lieutenant Laura Sharp, Assistant District Attorney Karen Guadati, and Attorney Linda Burton. It's my pleasure to recognize both Monica and Lupe as the dual recipients of this year's Hammerman Award. I actually had a chance to spend a few minutes with them yesterday. They took time out of their busy schedules to come down and chat. And basically, I wanted to know mainly about their day-to-day work and helping victims through the process of the criminal justice system. And I have to tell you, just in those few minutes, how impressed I was with both of these women and the work that they do for victims of domestic violence. Their days are varied, of course. There are trials. There are just unexpected things that turn up in these cases. But we can be really proud of the services that Monica and Lupe deliver to victims. So on behalf of my colleagues, I'm very appreciative of the work that you do, and in fact, the work of the District Attorney's Office, and Karen Guadati and Steve Wagstaff, I think, are to be commended for their commitment to prosecuting perpetrators of domestic violence. We did have a motion, right?
Yes.
And we have a second? Okay.
We have it all in favor, too.
We have it all in favor. Okay, so I have, I have two beautiful resolutions for you. And we're going to have, of course, a couple of speakers. I saw the chief from San Mateo County, or San Mateo City, I'm sorry, come in earlier. And maybe after I give you the resolutions, we could ask the chief to come and say a few words. And there may be other speakers, and you may want to say a few words, too. But first, let me present you with these resolutions.
On the middle?
It's my humble privilege to work with deputy district attorneys that work in domestic violence in our office.
Monica, go to the microphone.
Yeah, sorry. I thought I had a pretty loud voice. It is my humble privilege to work with all the deputy district attorneys that work in domestic violence in our county and to serve the victims that I serve in domestic violence. This award is accepted on behalf of them, and I will keep it in my office so that when they come in to see me, I can share it with them. Thank you.
I, too, am a woman of few words. But I do really feel blessed to be acknowledged for doing the work that I love to do on behalf of victims of domestic violence. I'm speechless as to how much more I have gained from this experience. I think more than I give. I want to acknowledge the office for honoring us with this. Karen Guadati, thank you so much for understanding the trials and the tribulations. Becky, thank you for your support. And also, the Victim Services Staff, where are you? Around here somewhere? The Victim Services Staff were the newest addition to the criminal justice system, and it has been a challenge of finding our place, but we have found it. So thank you for this acknowledgement. And I want to say hello to my little brothers. They showed up after their shift at the jail. Hey, brothers? And Monica, thank you for being my partner against crime.
Thank you, too.
Thank you both for your work and for those remarks, and congratulations on receiving the award. Without objection, I'd like to call on Chief Mannheimer first, because I know she has to get to a graduation ceremony. So Chief, could you come to the podium?
Thank you so much. We're graduating forty-two new members of our profession at the Gavilan Academy, so I appreciate that. So for the Board Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Byers, and to this great community, what a county we have. I'm here to say that we in the Police Department, Frances Grunder, Barb's partner of many years, and the rest of the advocacy community are very grateful that Barb's legacy is affirmed year after year and that you allow me to say a few words on her behalf. Thirty-two years ago, when I joined this profession, I remember responding to domestic violence calls, not many, very different than they are today, with victims throughout families that no-no zip code, and that we simply didn't have the right answers as the input in the system to provide the response that we now have. Barb was a huge trailblazer and a big part of that. Barb was someone that was not satisfied with the status quo. She was someone that spent more than twenty years of her professional life as a police officer. She came in to save lives, and she recognized very quickly that part of saving those lives was recognizing the trauma, recognizing that there are practices and partners that we need to invoke to ensure that entire families and even the batter community breaks the cycle of this horrible domestic violence. And I'm just here to tell you today that Barb would be so proud of the current recipients of this award, as she is all of the rest, and that I really think that in opening this award now to all of those within the continuum of the response community, really, I think, embodies Barb's true spirit in recognizing that, yes, our first response matters so critically to the outcome, but it is all of the resources combined together that truly does that, with Cora, with the rest of the Domestic Violence Council, with the Attorney General's Violence Prevention, as well as that here dedicated in this county to stepping forward every single time. So thank you, thanks for the legacy for Barb Hammerman. Thank you for continuing to shine a light on this. We relentlessly go after domestic violence every day, and we do it in a trauma-informed, victim-centered way, and for that, Barb's legacy lives on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief, for joining us today, and I know you have to rush, and travel safe on those freeways. Supervisor Groom wanted to say a couple of words.
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to speak for the Samateans. Deputy Manager Kelly and I knew Barbara when, from our time on the service of San Mateo, and her memory still lives in the Police Department and in the city of San Mateo. One of the things that she helped us start in San Mateo was our Police Activities League, and she was a real leader in taking the kids out and talking to kids, and especially helping kids who came from homes where there was domestic violence and domestic abuse in there. She just did a wonderful work with the children of San Mateo, who are now, you know, ten years, fifteen years old, and I'm sure they still remember those times. Not a day goes by, I think, for those of us who knew Barbara, who remember her personality and the enormous work that she did. And I'm just awfully glad that we continue to remember her on this day.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Horsley.
Just to make a quick comment on Barbara, so for the Monica and Lupe, you receiving this award is really much more special, maybe, than you even realize, because she was, Barbara was really one of a kind. She was not only good with kids, she was definitely a trailblazer. She was a motorcycle officer, she was a great investigator, and she was a really special person. And she really was committed to and focused on domestic violence in a way that almost, I think, to some extent, was a detriment to her early career. Because I think that, as I recall, because I knew her on a personal basis, and I know Mike did as well, and not the current chief, but one of the chiefs in the past, had asked her to kind of, in essence, back off a bit. She wouldn't. And in fact, I was the sheriff at the time, and I did try to recruit her. And she didn't come, because she was loyal to the city, and, you know, subsequent chiefs recognized her really special qualities. She was just one of a kind. And to receive this award is really a very special honor. So congratulations for the work you do. And I, too, have seen, and I know Mike has as well, the changes. Melissa Lucan has done such a fabulous job with Cora, and the services that we have for victims of domestic violence are, I think, really second to none. But I can tell you that it wasn't that way all, you know that as well, it wasn't that way in the past. And I'm really glad and appreciative of the fact that our services are starting to catch up and provide safety for victims of domestic violence.
Thank you, Supervisor. Other comments? I would invite Karen Guadati to come and say a few words. Karen?
I just want to start by thanking you for giving this award to Lupe and Monica, who are members of the District Attorney's Office. We're very appreciative that they've been recognized in this way. Just want to let you know a little bit about them and to hearken to what President Slocum said a few minutes ago about knowing what they do on a day-to-day basis. Monica and Lupe, as you know, are both domestic violence advocates in our office, and Monica has been doing that for fifteen years, and Lupe for seventeen years. So for the past decade and a half, they've been advocating tirelessly for domestic violence victims in our office. So let me tell you what they do day-to-day. They review every single domestic violence case that is filed in our office. They review the police reports, and they reach out and make contact with the victims. That's about a thousand cases every year. They explain the criminal justice process to the victim to prepare them for the road ahead. They make safety plans with the victim. They discuss other community resources and organizations, such as Cora, that may be of assistance to them. They accompany victims to court when they testify, when needed, and they attend all of the misdemeanor pretrial conferences to provide to the judge, defense attorneys, and deputy DAs information and input about what the victim's needs are as it relates to consequences to the offender. Occasionally, they get yelled at by domestic violence victims who don't want the offender being prosecuted, but they persist nonetheless in making sure that they are safe. And once in a while, they get positive affirmation and appreciation from victims who tell them that they could never have gotten through the criminal justice process without their support, from the deputy DAs who prosecute these cases and know how much Monica and Lupe do to support them, from the judges who value the input from our advocates about the victim, and today, from you, for recognizing them for their excellence. So thank you very much for bestowing this award upon them. I think you'd agree that they're very deserving. Thank you.
Just one last time to recognize you both and just say how appreciative the Board is for your work day-to-day. I'm sure it's a very, very stressful job, but at the same time, one that's very, very rewarding. So congratulations on this award. Thank you. Now, if we could move to item number five, please, which is a presentation of a resolution honoring the Cow Palace on the occasion of its 75th anniversary, and Supervisor Tissier is going to do this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of you probably don't know that the Cow Palace is actually called the 1A District Agricultural Association, but it's commonly and popularly known as the Cow Palace, and it's celebrating its 75th anniversary this year. It was established in 1941 as a facility dedicated to conducting annually its signature event, which is the Grand National Livestock Expo, Horse Show, and Rodeo, the first of which was held on November 15, 1941, and it continues to this day to engage and encourage youth participation in the agricultural industry. Now, I could probably take you down memory lane here, but if you can recall some of the renowned events that have taken place at the Cow Palace, I think some of you might remember the electrifying speech of Democratic Presidential candidate John F. Kennedy in 1960, Martin Luther King's Freedom Rally in 1961, the Republican National Conventions of 1956 and 64, the first U.S. appearance of the Beatles in 1964, the return of the Golden State Warriors to their 1962 home court, and when they were crowned NBA champions in 1975. And as many of you know, there's been countless concerts and professional sporting events, and of course, coming up soon again is the Grand National Rodeo. So I would like to call up to accept this resolution after I make the motion to approve.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor? Aye. Aye.
I'd like to call up Cow Palace CEO Lori Marshall and Cow Palace Board Member/ Director Bill Knack. A familiar face.
Thank you, Supervisor Tissier, and good morning, President Slocum, Supervisor Groom, Supervisor Horsley, Supervisor Pine, John Byers, and Mike Kelly. My name is Bill Knack, and I am a member of the Board for the Cow Palace. For those of you who grew up in the Bay Area, and even those who have just recently arrived, the Cow Palace holds many memories. Tractor pulls, motocrosses, monster truck events, concerts by the Beatles, Rolling Stones, The Who, Grateful Dead, Rod Stewart, Santana, Boy Scout camperees, numerous political events, Warrior basketball games, Ringling Brothers and Barnum &amp; Bailey circuses, ice hockey, and for the newer generation, the Salesforce event, which is happening this week, where they changed the name on the arena to Cloud Palace. So if you're driving up that way, you should check it out. Through all of that, the Cow Palace continued to hold the annual Grand National Rodeo, except during World War II, when the Cow Palace was used by the federal government to house troops embarking to the combat zones in the Pacific Theater. This month, we are holding our 70th Grand National on two weekends, Friday, the 14th, Saturday, the 15th, and Friday, the 21st, and Saturday, the 22nd. If you've never seen a rodeo, now's the time to take advantage of that. It's pretty exciting. And in concluding, we thank you for this recognition of the Cow Palace's 75 years being part of the history of San Mateo County and the Bay Area.
And Daly City. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just finishing out your words for you.
Bill, before you step down, could you just say a word about the event where we're inviting the veterans to come to the Cow Palace or the rodeo?
Sure. We're holding the 22nd, the night of the 22nd, is the veterans, honoring the veterans at the rodeo, and we are inviting all the veterans who really would like to come. There will be a special ceremony and recognition, and President Slocum will be there to welcome all those vets in attendance that evening. So we look forward to that.
Thank you. Me, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to item number six, which is a presentation of commendations to the Wellness Leadership Recognition Program. Supervisor Groom.
Thanks, President Slocum. The county of San Mateo really, really believes in health and wellness, and we walk the talk and practice what we preach. We engage all of our employees to take advantage of trainings, screenings, special events. We promote healthy food, healthy beverages. We ask during long meetings that you take a little break and stand and do some stretching. And it's very important that we have a healthy workforce. I mean, it's very important that we live in a healthy county, but it's really important that we have a healthy workforce and that we make a lot of things available to our employees so that they can really keep on their health, fitness, when they're at work. And reinforcing the policies of health and wellness are our supervisors, supervisors of the employees, who make sure that they get that extra minute to take advantage of the healthy things that they need. So we're honoring those supervisors today and thanking them for really following the rigors of being healthy, making sure that their employees are healthy, and practicing what we preach. And so we have a lot of supervisors to honor this morning, and I have some resolutions to give out. I think we don't, I think we've approved, these are commendations, so we don't need to approve them. Make the motion anyway, Warren.
All those in favor? Second.
Okay. Bill Thane is our first.
I'm well this morning.
No, I did.
She felt in well.
Michelle Puka. 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 Karen Pfister.[603.03][603.03](Applause) Katherine Howard.[605.03][605.03](Applause) Laura Finnegan. 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 Yes, thank you. Michael Del Rosario.[671.03][671.03](Applause) Mayon Patel.[673.03][673.03](Applause) Michelle Puka. 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 Michelle Puka.
Now, Mr. President, we had some folks who were unable to attend today, and I wanted to just recognize them. Noel Burton, Ricky Cott, Ronald Patrick Keating, Sarah Affu, Louise Marie Robaina, Manuel Garcia, Mariana Espagna, Irma Hollister, Gladys Smith, Ashley Gardner, Christina Kelly, David Carlos, and Christine Gomez. Well, you weren't supposed to be here.[844.32][844.32](Laughter) And your certificates have gone to your departments, but, but please stand up and let's give
Thank you all supervisors for supporting this important health program. It's sincerely appreciated, as you can tell. And Supervisor Groom, I'm just very impressed with the pronunciation of all the names. You did a great job. Thank you.
That's what happens when you're healthy.
That's right.[880.68][880.68](Laughter) Now, we're going to move on to our nine o'clock item, which is Department Performance Reports. And I think this is going to be kicked off by Ms. Faralis.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Callagie, Mr. Byers, Reyna Faralis, Deputy County Manager. And I just wanted to kick off our department performance reports. As your board knows, we moved to a two-year budget cycle so that we can spend a little more time on performance improvement. And over the next several board meetings, you'll be hearing all of our department heads make their performance reports and covering their accomplishments and their goals and priorities for the next couple of years. So in San Mateo County, we manage our performance towards the board and the community's shared vision 2025, and that is for healthy and safe, prosperous, livable, environmentally conscious, and collaborative community. And we have nine community goals, community impact goals that we are working towards. And as departments are making their presentations, you'll see the contributions of each department to, to these goals. And we've spent the last several years with many of our supervisors and managers in particular to align our human and financial resources, like the budget. And in the board reports, as you see, we've got alignment, shared vision, and then working with employees on their performance and development goals, so they're all in alignment and contributing to the shared vision goals. As you'll also see in the department performance presentations, we've made a lot of progress in several areas in the growing of our culture of performance here in San Mateo County. You will see more benchmarks, and these are comparisons to county averages or regional, state, and national averages, more focus on outcomes and efficiency, so those measures that tell us whether our clients and customers are, are better off, and the results of the lean process improvement efforts that have been happening throughout our county departments. You will see the clear line of sight, so many of the supervisors who are here today are required to attend essential supervisory skills, and that's where we teach all of our supervisors to set goals with their staff, to provide them ongoing feedback and coaching, and to also conduct meaningful annual evaluations of staff. We just got an email on employee engagement surveys, so we've been doing that for the last, I believe, six, six years here in the county. So you'll, you'll see some of those results in the department head presentations, as well as customer satisfaction ratings. So getting all of this internal and external feedback on performance has been key initiatives over the last several years. And then finally, data-driven decision-making, we are making progress on our dashboards. We have a shared vision dashboard, the department performance dashboards, which, if you want to see more detail on the department's performance at the program level, there is the dashboard site, the next slide. And then we're also, in terms of prioritizing budget proposals for the next round, doing a lot more around gathering the data around clients and what the needs are and where in the community those needs are, and preparing budget proposals in that way. So in the department performance reports, you'll be hearing this month as well as next month, you'll hear about the department's mission, accomplishments, and progress on their goals, their challenges heading into the next budget cycle, and what their initial priorities are looking like. You'll hear client stories, as well as any updates on Measure A initiatives for those departments that have been provided with Measure A funds. And then with the dashboards, that, that site is performance.smc.gov.org. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Louise Rogers, who is our first department presentation.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Callagie and Mr. Byers. I'm Louise Rogers, Chief of the Health System, and I'm delighted to be here to share highlights of our performance from the last fiscal year. Our mission is helping San Mateo County residents live longer, better lives. We use life expectancy, a key public health performance measure, to assess how we're doing on behalf of the county. As you know, our many community assets make San Mateo County an extraordinary place to live, and our health overall is very strong. But health outcomes are not shared equitably among all of our populations. And you see here in our headline measure how life expectancy varies by race. We also see that it varies by income level, by educational attainment, and by where you live. So for example, a life expectancy in East Palo Alto is 19 years less than in Atherton. That's why we continue to focus the health system's work, not only on delivering the right service at the right time and the right place, but also on addressing the root causes of poor health through policy change. We report our performance to you all through five values, and I'll share some highlights in each of those areas. We focus on providing the right service at the right time and place because we know our effectiveness really depends on reaching people at exactly the right time. Some of our services, like our emergency medical services, are designed to reach more than 700,000 San Mateo County residents. And their comprehensive cardiac arrest program is really designed to improve the health of the entire county. Right now, our cardiac arrest survival rates are actually lower in San Mateo County than the national average. Ours are 29% versus 33%. So we're working to erase that gap through a number of different initiatives. Last year, we partnered with local hospitals on a community education campaign to help people recognize the signs of a heart attack and to encourage them to call 911 rather than to drive themselves in, which many people do, not realizing that sometimes they're driving themselves to the wrong hospital. We were really pleased to see that campaign viewed 33 million times. And since 2014, we've seen a 60% increase in the number of STEMI heart attack patients who are calling 911 for transportation rather than driving themselves in. You all heard recently, in the last few months, about some other improvements in this area, including hearing from a survivor recently. Now I'd like to take a minute and share with you some of the highlights that we've seen targeting the right service at the right time to our most vulnerable populations. We aim to work as upstream as possible to intervene at the root cause of an underlying problem and to engage clients at the best opportunity so that we can have the greatest impact. One example is our home visiting programs, like the Nurse Family Partnership, that support low-income pregnant women in achieving the healthiest start and best trajectory possible for their families. This story will help you see the kind of dual, dual-generation impact that we can have.
I knew something was wrong, so I went to the doctor at the teen clinic, and she told me I was pregnant. She told me I was five months pregnant, and I was having a boy. And she gave me a note to take to the adult clinic. It's where I met Erica. She went more into detail with what the Nurse Family Partnership program consisted of, what I would expect, as well as how often the home visitations would be. I automatically got really interested because I was afraid of what was going to happen after my baby came into this world. Erica, you have taught me about what patience really is and reminded me how to be confident. You pushed me to stay with my education when I was feeling depressed. Erica, you have made it possible for me to continue making goals for myself and for my family. I thank you for all the good information you have given me, for all the times you were available, but most of all, I want to thank you for your determination of helping me become the mature, independent, loving mother I am today.
Another example we'd like to highlight is improvements at San Mateo Medical Center. In this example, providing service within 48 hours in order to avoid avoidable emergency room visits. Through increasing access to primary care, the medical center has been able to meet 20 to 50% of patient needs over the phone, keeping emergency room visits for our assigned patients to less than 5%. Another great example of providing the right service at the right time and place is the work we've been doing with the sheriff's office to create a new clinic at the new Maple Street Correctional Center, and also open mental health wellness pods for our mentally ill inmates. We have the pod open for women, for 10 women, and we're on track to open another for 30 men in the next few months. Our IMAP program, which is the Integrated Medication-Assisted Treatment Program, has been off to a great start, using a variety of strategies to engage people with drug and, in drug and alcohol treatment, including engaging people in a VIVITROL protocol, which has shown remarkable progress in treating chronic alcoholism within a relatively short period of time. We've engaged 550 people in this program, 160 of them, in the VIVITROL protocol. We were also able in the last year to expand our mobile street, our mobile clinic services through the street and field medicine team. This is a multidisciplinary team that reaches people where they are primarily in the field, farm workers, as well as chronic street homeless, essentially engaging people over a period of time to engage in more routine care through our clinic system as possible. And they've been able to assure more than a 70% show rate for the people that they engage in the street, which is quite extraordinary. And in the next month, I will be returning to you all regarding our efforts to secure a grant, a federal and state grant, that would allow us to substantially expand our street and field medicine program, as well as other efforts that we employ to engage our most complex patients. This is a partnership with the Health Plan of San Mateo and the Human Services Agency and their HOT program, other partners as well. And essentially, what it will allow us, if we obtain the grant, which looks very promising, is to leverage our existing investments and receive federal dollars for this sort of work, allowing us to expand the effort at the same time. And our hope is to be able to engage in the future more than 2,000 patients through this expanded effort, which I expect to bring back to you in November. And at that time, I will be also asking for your support for $2 million in Measure A dollars to invest in the housing aspect of the program, which would allow us to engage those patients that we have who are the most complex and for whom housing is a great barrier to good health. We've been able to make a great difference in our right care, right time, right place work through substantial Measure A investments, nearly $11 million in this fiscal year across 29 different programs, all ages. It's too much to go into today in a lot of detail, but I thought I'd highlight several examples. The first, our Parent Project program, which is a partnership with the County Office of Education. We've had outstanding graduation rates, teaching parents parenting skills particularly aimed at navigating through the challenges of adolescents. Our evaluations show that 96% of these parents are more satisfied with their parenting skills, 83% of their children are increasing school attendance, and 94% are experiencing fewer expulsions. You've heard recently about the success in our older adult in our EDAP program, the Financial Abuse Project we're aiming at older adults. And recently, you've heard about the Housing Inspection Program that Environmental Health is using to target frequent violator properties back into compliance. I'd like to share another story with you that gives you a sense of how our key partners, like educators, view the county's Measure A investments in prevention and early intervention. This example is targeted at Mental Health First Aid, which aims to teach school administrators, teachers, parents, and students how to identify early warning signs of mental illness and how to respond.
I had a teacher come to me with a nine-year-old in crisis who tried to eat a pencil and saying that she wanted to die. And I'm standing there going, oh my God, I just took this training, and I knew exactly what to do. In less than an hour, I had a girl connected with a therapist, a local therapist in town, and she's now seeing her once a week. It affects everybody, affects the whole fabric of the school when you have a child in such crisis. So I, you know, after it was all over and mom took her home, I told the school secretary, I'm gonna go to my office and cry for around 10 minutes. That's my self-care. And I'm still sort of... Gets me choked up. Because it's a nine-year-old child. And you hope you never have to see someone that's that sad and depressed that she wants to end her life. So that's why I'm here doing this, to childfully persuade you to get your staff trained.
As I mentioned earlier, we in the health system also have a role in preventing health problems through policy change with key partners. In the last year, one change that we're really proud of in partnership with the Tobacco Education Coalition is to secure the passage and implementation of tobacco prevention policies by six local jurisdictions. Thank you to the Coalition and those cities for helping to make our community healthier. Another sign of progress in the last year is that through our efforts with other counties, we were able to expand the drug and alcohol, the scope of benefits available under that program. This is something that low-income residents in San Mateo County will see, those people who struggle with addictions will see benefits for years to come. You will recall your board took action in the last year to implement assisted outpatient treatment, formerly known as Laura's Law, AB 1421, to add another tool in our list of options for people with mental illness who really struggle to engage in treatment. We implemented it with the staff shown here, accepting referrals on July 1. I will bring you a fuller report in the next few months, but I wanted you to know that we've already made 34 presentations in the community. At this point, the slide is now updated. We've made 74 connections with people as a result of referrals and all sorts of leads. And we've enrolled nine people in intensive full-service partnership services. We have not, at this point, had to use court intervention, but we are prepared for that. And in order to prevent this sort of disabling mental illness that is so often exacerbated by early childhood trauma, we have significantly expanded our efforts to support trauma-informed work, even partnering with other counties in the Bay Area, nine counties, to leverage the Measure A investments and obtain a federal grant and create a trauma training center with another, with nine other counties. And the kinds of results that you see from this trauma-informed care approach are evident in our own experience with Canyon Oaks, our residential treatment center for adolescents, where we've seen a 47% decrease in runaways and a 91% decrease in hands-on interventions. Providing a great experience to everyone who interacts with us is one of our core values. One example of that is our restaurant placarding program, which we started last January, rolling it out to 3,000 different restaurants, food trucks, and other operators. The new placards use the familiar green, red, yellow signage to make it easier for the public to make an informed choice about where to dine. One of our most effective strategies for improving our patient experience is to hear directly from the source. This Youth Advisory Committee for California Children's Services, which we launched in partnership with the Health Plan, is a mechanism for 28 young people who struggle with complex medical problems to have input to all of our policy and communications. And we've used a similar approach, hearing from people with lived experience, in the launch of our transgender-focused pilot at the Edison Clinic. We're really pleased that the medical center has seen significant improvement in patient satisfaction scores that we believe reflect several changes. The first is that we recently upgraded and unified the phone system and all the protocols across the system, leading to a 70% reduction in wait times on the phone and a 64% reduction in abandoned calls. Once the patients arrive at the medical center, we want to make sure that they feel secure and have a positive experience. So we've trained over 900 medical center staff in WE Care, which is a protocol to guarantee and assure consistent best service every time when a patient interacts with staff at the medical center at any level. And you can see here the improvement in the satisfaction scores, up from 58% several years ago to 65% most recently. And in other areas of the health system where we measure staff, client satisfaction, we've hit 95%, which reflects about 2,700 client surveys. Our fourth value is creating a great place to work for our employees, and we really appreciate the partnership of the Human Resources Department in rolling out the new survey and giving us loads of technical assistance about how to improve engagement. As you see here, 81% of our employees rated their experience very positively. That's up from 77% the previous year. We'd like to continue to improve, and we're focusing on making sure that our staff have the feedback they need, the tools they need, safe facilities. We've done with the sheriff's office, safety assessments of more than 20 of our facilities, and creating a culture of wellness across the department. We were really pleased that more than 50 of our supervisors and managers were nominated for the awards that you just heard recognized. As you can see, we're consistently surpassing performance goals for our programs with a goal of 73% for this coming fiscal year. Our fifth, fifth goal is using the funds entrusted to us wisely. Cost per capita is rising, but we are consistently below the benchmark for all Bay Area counties. A couple of other examples I'd like to highlight. First, thanks to the board's support, we've been working with the Housing Department to implement your plan to stabilize five residential treatment providers' properties with $5 million. And today on the agenda, you saw the most recent example of that. Also, in partnership with the Human Services Agency and the Health Plan, we've transitioned 93% of eligible kids from our locally funded Healthy Kids program to Medi-Cal, resulting in 2,600 children having improved health coverage by August 2016, enabling the county to redirect $2.4 million a year in local contributions for that program to other important needs. This county can be proud of providing 16 years and still continuing 100% coverage for our kids. Now I'd like to take a minute and look forward to our challenges and goals. Let's start with the challenges. We continue to see rising income inequality that requires low-income residents and families to face disproportionate health burdens as well as intergenerational poverty. Most recently, per the census, income inequality rose 8% between 2010 and 2014. We are grateful for the passage of healthcare reform and the massive expansion in coverage. There have been outstanding results from those reform efforts. However, it's important to note that the financial implications for our county and our health services are still unfolding, and we must manage our financial future very carefully. We're also fortunate to work alongside committed partners at the county, city, and community levels who are tackling the determinants of health, such as climate change, and will continue to work with the Office of Sustainability and your board to address the roles we can play. For example, most recently, staffing the groundwater study with the Office of Sustainability. Staff retention is a challenge. Staff find it difficult to afford living in San Mateo County and were challenged to recruit for hard-to-fill positions, and we have many. Those who have to live elsewhere find their commutes getting longer. I want to take a moment and acknowledge the board and the county manager's office and the Office of Sustainability for all the work that's gone on to supporting a shuttle for our employees. We are convinced that this is going to make a difference. We hear it's making a difference, and I've had many emails from the employees that have taken advantage of it, just appreciating what a difference it makes every day for them. In terms of our goals moving forward, many of these build on some of the programs that I've described. First, making the healthy choice the easiest choice through policy change. One example of this is that we're prepared to respond to changes in marijuana legality if necessary by bolstering our prevention and policy efforts, building on the success that we've had in this county with tobacco. Second, we want to intervene as early as possible to prevent problems. We're hopeful, for example, that the grant opportunity that I described earlier for the new Whole Person Care Initiative and an expanded homeless, complex client engagement effort through that work will really anchor this in the coming years. Third, we want to continue to coordinate and integrate care to create a seamless experience for our patients. And an example of this is rolling out our new health information exchange that will allow us to link our various electronic health records and make it easier for our teams to coordinate amongst, with their clinical work. Fourth, we're really excited about all of the capital projects that we have afoot to rebuild Cordilleras Mental Health Center for the 21st Century, build a new animal shelter, as well as complete feasibility studies for San Mateo and South San Francisco campuses, to partner with the City of Daly City and the Jefferson Union School District on a new location for the Daly City Youth Health Center. And last but not least, we will continue to build a community of problem solvers through our LEAP efforts to drive quality and satisfaction up and costs down. I want to thank you, the board, the county manager's office, our partner county departments, all our staff, and our community partners and supporters, including the Health Plan of San Mateo, for giving us the ability to dream big on these goals. And I'd like to close with a story on this community of problem solvers concept. Inspired by a day in the field with our line staff and partners observing how challenging and defeating it is to not have the right resource to offer someone who struggles with chronic alcoholism, Stephen Kaplan and his team enlisted an ever-expanding community of problem solvers, including the entire health system, the Health Plan, because by the way, his, his solution didn't have a funding stream, community agencies, human services and criminal justice, the county manager's office, and your board, to develop a model and a pilot for an innovative new approach, particularly to treating chronic alcoholism, that we've later called the Integrated Medication-Assisted Treatment Team, the IMAT Team. And this example really illustrates the transformation that a single problem solver expanding to a community can accomplish. This patient was originally engaged by the street and field medicine team on the street. He had been street homeless for 15 years, struggling with alcoholism. He had an acute infection that led to an emergency room visit, and one month later, he was seen again on the street and given a wound care appointment that day. This led to an echocardiogram at the hospital for an irregular heartbeat, a 10-day stay in the hospital, and discharge to Burlingame Long-Term Care. The IMAT team was able to engage him while he was at Burlingame, convincing him to try Naltrexone, a medication that requires daily, taking the pill daily. Tired of his situation, he agreed to try keeping the medication in his pocket each day to stay on track after he was discharged, finally achieving the first sobriety he experienced for 15 years, and that enabled him to obtain permanent supported housing within six months. His improved health has had ripple effects for the family and the community that he's a part of, and we now have 550 other people engaged on this path, thanks to your support. As we look to the future, I'm inspired by our staff and by our partners. I'm inspired by the resilience of our patients, and I'm really inspired by the amazing support that we have in this county, including your support, to enable this work. Thank you. And I'd be delighted to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Questions?
Thank you, Louise. We constantly hear about the great work of the healthcare system. From time to time, we see these polls of comparing us to state and national programs. We're always near the top. So we are very proud of the work you do. I mentioned a couple of quick questions. You know, one is actually a little bit out of curiosity. I was surprised to see that the Hispanic lifespan was higher than Caucasian. Because one would think for demographic reasons or income reasons, it'd be the other, other way around.
I know, that is very interesting. Our understanding of the best thinking about why that would be the case is something that is sometimes referred to as the immigrant effect. And there are populations that move to the United States and that move to this county who actually maintain fairly good health until they've been assimilated and start to adopt all of our unhealthy habits and also experience the kind of poor food and access that is common for people with low income. However, it's also the case that Hispanics struggle disproportionately with some health issues. But that is, that is a fact of that slide, that life expectancy is longer than with some other populations.
Okay, interesting. Could you speak just a little bit about our ACE population, you know, in light of ACA and demographic changes? Maybe just give a little perspective on how we're doing with that, that population?
Yes. As I mentioned, healthcare reform has really been a good thing, and that is substantially because so many people who had been formerly uninsured are now covered either through the Medi-Cal program, which expanded through the Medi-Cal expansion, and through Covered California. So I have here a couple of numbers for you, which may, may not be totally current, but we've seen a drop by about 26,000 in the number of uninsured San Mateo County residents since 2012, when we had 83,000, to about 57,000 today. We also saw the number of residents enrolled in the MCE. The Expanded Medi-Cal program was 34,000, and that Covered California had 26,000. So we had a total of 60,000 people enrolled in the, under the Affordable Care Act in new coverage. And the ACE program at this point has dwindled to about 20,000.
From, what was the prior number?
At its high, it was around 31,000.
Okay. Well, those are, I mean, it's great news that we've had so many of our residents able to avail themselves of the ACA.
That's right.
Insurance, 60,000 people.
Yeah, and I think that the partnership that we have in place locally with the Human Services Agency and with the Health Plan has really paved the way for that kind of effort.
So just two more questions, if I might. I, I know you've worked very hard with the Cordilleras funding and design issue, working with the federal government, because, you know, we're hopeful that our funding will be improved with the new design. Have we, have we worked through that now?
Well, we're nearly through it. What I would say is that we're actually through the hardest part. The state and federal government have confidence that the locked programs, the small residential treatment programs that we have planned, would be eligible for reimbursement under the Medi-Cal program. So that was actually the challenge that we were expecting to have. We're now dealing with some of the concerns that they have potentially around the supported housing aspects of it, but we should hear very soon. And actually, we weren't expecting to claim any Medi-Cal for the supported housing, so that, that's less of an issue. And we're working with the Department of Public Works now with several potential design bid contractor teams to look essentially at the cost and the feasibility of everything that we've planned and potentially to have to engage you all again around making some choices around that. But it looks very, we continue to move forward, and we're feeling that we can continue to work towards the same timeline that we have been operating from.
Great. And then finally, maybe Raina can help here, too. On, on the cost per capita benchmark, I guess two questions. How do we calculate that? Do we take the total healthcare budget and divide it by 750,000 people?
Yeah, the simplest way to understand it is that we compare ourselves to other counties in the Bay Area. We compare ourselves with the functions that we have that are the same functions. So for example, we're quite unusual in the entire state in having aging and adult services in our health system. So we don't include that. We look at our total cost, and then we divide by the population and come up with a per-capita cost.
But it sounds like you're trying to make it apples to apples. You might pull out a couple of things.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, and then, you know, on this chart, you know, as you mentioned, there, you know, has been a bit of, it has been an increase in this per-capita benchmark. If you go back to 13, 14, it's about a, it's closing in on $100 increase. Could you just tell us a little bit about why that's gone up to that degree?
I think in that time period, because our positions have gone down, would it be Burlingame Long-Term Care? Long-Term Care?
Medi-Cal expansion.
Yeah, we, oh, well, Measure A, Medi-Cal expansion and healthcare reform would be contributors to an increase, not so much through county operations, but through the work that we do that's contracted, which is where it is substantially. What about Burlingame? Okay, all right. I can get back to you with more information on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Tissier?
Just a quick question, Louise. When you talked about the new tobacco prevention policies, and you mentioned these six cities, do we have, don't we have existing prevention policies in other cities already? Are these just in addition to, or are these the only ones that actually have these prevention policies?
These are the cities that passed local ordinances in that, in the year, within the year.
Was that related to, like, smoking in apartments? Is that kind of tobacco?
Multi-unit, well, some of it was tied to the work of the county, looking at the multi-unit housing issue.
Because I thought Belmont had done one. I thought Daly City, I'm not sure if Daly City did one. I thought they did. That's why I was sort of curious if this is
I think they may predate.
Daly City had already acted.
Well, that's what I meant. Are there other ones that are existing that
Yes, I think that this is just the last year.
Just for the
The continued progress of the last year.
So I'd be sort of curious, overall, how many cities have prevention policies in gen, you know, is it half of them, three quarters? Just, because if we're adding six, I mean, that's tremendous, but how many already have it? So where are we on that scale?
Okay.
But that's great. Also, I want to thank you for your help with the Daly City Youth Health Center. We're getting closer and closer every day.
Excited about that.
So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom, questions? No? Supervisor Horsley?
Just a, on the, a couple of questions. On the assisted outpatient treatment, by the way, known as Laura's Law, the, that actually numbers are kind of low. I thought originally there was something like 100 inquiries at, at one point, but, but it looks like you only have a fairly small number of patients. Is that?
Well, we've had a lot of inquiries.
Yeah.
More than 74 that we've followed up on, but as you know, the criteria are pretty limited. The good news is that we can link people, and we do, even when the inquiry doesn't result in a Laura's Law appropriate service. It's, it becomes a front door to connect people to all sorts of things. And we've had some people end up through this front door on conservatorship, which is actually a more robust strategy anyway for helping people remain in treatment.
Okay. The other question had to do with policy, the policy to support trauma-informed care.
Uh-huh.
Is that the policy, as I recall, we, there's a, it was a program to identify a teen in their first episode of, of
Schizophrenia and Bipolar Disorder.
Is that, is that the program?
No, those are two other programs that sadly, with the amount of time, I didn't, I was not able to share with you, but we have an early intervention program with schizophrenia, which we call PREP, which is a partnership with Family Service Agency and UCSF, and another one for bipolar disorder.
Okay, just let me, offline, let me know how many clients we've had
Okay.
and what the affect has been so far. Thanks.
I was just going to add, I'm sorry, Warren, I didn't turn my microphone on. I was going to add that the, the value of the, the nurse-family partnership and the teen pregnancy work that the Health Department does is just, is just astounding, and I'm lucky enough to, to attend most of the teen partner, the partnership meetings and listen to the stories of young women who, who became pregnant but are still managing to finish school and care for their baby and care for them, their own health. It's, it's really a, a great program.
And the video really does a nice job of capturing that.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one quick question, Ms. Rogers. You, in the beginning, you said something like, the folks that live in East Palo Alto are expected to live 19 years less than those living in Atherton. I think that was the gist of it. And I'm wondering if you could outline a couple, if there are some targeted efforts in the community of East Palo Alto that might someday affect these numbers.
Well, there are a lot of different things that ultimately are going to affect life expectancy and actually access to healthcare, which people have in East Palo Alto primarily through Ravenswood Family Health Center, is just one. When we really look at how to fundamentally impact over the course of time, hitting third grade literacy levels, you know, would rank up as one of the highest, most important things that we could do to help people live longer lives. Hitting third grade literacy levels is then going to make it more likely for kids to graduate from high school. It's going to make them less likely to end up in the juvenile justice system or in the criminal justice system, and it's going to make them more likely to get a, a well-paying job, which is going to raise income levels, and in the end of the day, that's going to lead to better health.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. There was a lot of good information there. Raina, is there any concluding remarks?
[inaudible]
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
President, we do have public comments from Mr. Martin Fox.
Mr. Fox, before you walk up here, I would ask you to stand down on your comments for this item.
I believe I've done that on a number of occasions. I wanted to respond to Supervisor Horsley's question.
I, I think on a
To depart from my two-minute [inaudible] remarks in order to do
Yeah, appreciate that. I think I've only asked you one time, one other time to stand down, and I would ask you again to consider that.
Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you. Good idea. Okay, so we'll move on to Department of Child Support Services.
Good morning, President Slocum.
Morning.
Vice President Horsley, members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Byers. I am Kim Conio, and I am the Agency Director for the Department of Child Support Services, and I'm very, very honored to be here today to share with you the performance report Our mission is to enhance the lives of children and families by helping parents meet the financial, medical, and emotional needs of their children in establishing and enforcing child support orders. We understand that the structure of a family can change over time, but the needs of our children remain the same. It is our vision that both parents responsibly share in providing for their children and raising them to be healthy and successful. A primary headline measure for the department is collections on current child support. The department exceeded anticipated target in increasing income to single-family households in this fiscal year. Today, over 70% of families who access our services are receiving consistent child support payments each month. In San Mateo County, we exceed the statewide average in this measure by 3.9%. Another primary headline measure is collections on past due support. Again, the department exceeds its target, providing 71% of families with additional income on past due support balances. On this measure, San Mateo County is over 7% higher than the statewide average. We align with the County of San Mateo's shared vision in building a prosperous community by providing financial support and a strong service delivery model. Our skilled workforce collected and distributed over $31.4 million to children and families this fiscal year. This is an overall increase of 4% over last year. In 2016, the department received the Director's Excellent Award for increasing distributed collections to families by over 5% when compared to other medium-sized counties. Child support is a poverty prevention program, and most of our services are free. 95% of support collections go directly into the hands of never or formerly aided families. Families in our caseload rely on an average monthly support payment of $3,378. This is 21% higher than the statewide average. When benchmarked to Bay Area counties, the department ranks second in the highest monthly collections to families. The child support program limits the needs for families, families to access government program funds, such as temporary aid for needy families. It is our goal to move families towards self-sufficiency and assist in breaking the cycle of poverty in our communities. This year, over 9,100 children in San Mateo County may face a brighter future as a result of our services. To many of these families, consistent child support payments is a main source of income. It can mean food on the table, a new pair of school shoes, or participation in sports activities. Child support professionals are passionate about serving the needs of the community. There are many success stories, such as how a child support caseworker helped a father reconnect with his daughter after 16 years, or how another worker negotiated our highest single collection of $250,000 on past due support owed to a family. Through a number of initiatives, the department met overall performance goals this fiscal 72% of customer respondents rated our service good or excellent. We fell below the benchmark target of 80% for this measure. To that end, the department created a customer service committee, which has completed a number of initiatives to, to improve customer service, such as real-time feedback surveys. Child support has many legal requirements, and not all our actions may seem fair to one or both parents. We strive to educate parents in an unbiased and cooperative way. In terms of cost per capita, the cost of the child support program for each county resident is below $14, and the department ranks lowest in costs when benchmarked to Bay Area counties. The department exceeded its target in percent of employees rating county work experience good or better. We believe that this is a result of employees having a clear understanding of the work they are responsible to perform, measurable goals, and opportunities to be innovative thinkers in moving the child support program forward. The department met its target of 90% of evaluations being completed on time. Supervisors have regular one-on-one meetings, provide constructive feedback to the employees, and engage in our strategic planning. Highlights. The department focused on a number of initiatives over the past fiscal year. We are most proud of the formation of, of our Pilot Court Team. The Pilot Court Team was launched in April 2015 with the objectives to, one, educate parents about the benefits of early communications in establishing a reasonable child support order; two, avoid the stress of going to court by helping parents agree to a monthly child support amount that provides consistent payments; three, remove timely barriers so that money can get into the hands of families in need. In the year that followed, we not only met our, but exceeded our goals, and what we, and what we set out to accomplish. Through increased communication and collaborative negotiations, child support agreements improved from an average of 22% to 42% this fiscal year. Statistical data trends prove that parents who can agree on a reasonable child support order are more likely to make consistent payments over the life of the child support case. The child support program has a unique opportunity to meet with and engage both parents towards stabilizing the family's dynamics and helping them to raise healthy and successful sons and daughters. For those parents who go to court, the department improved the average number of days from court hearing to first payment from 99 days to 30 days. By partnering with our courts and utilizing technology, parents now leave the courtroom with a filed court order in hand. What used to take 32 days now is same-day delivery. In May 2016, the department's court team received the Outstanding Group Achievement Award by the California Child Support Directors Association. But all employees of the department are to be commended for playing a role in the success of the court team. They are all passionate public servants who support the mission and vision of our agency and of the County of San Mateo. Highlights. We believe that families are stronger today because of the important work our child support professionals perform. In partnering with the Human Services Agency, we referred many parents to the vocational rehabilitation services, resulting in employment and payment of delinquent child support. Through grant funding, we support the big lift by providing a book to every child that comes into our office or attends an outreach event. We give back to the community by participating in children fun campaigns, back-to-school backpack initiatives, and wellness. Goals. Our priorities over the next two years is to enhance program performance through our holistic service delivery model and core values of three Cs: care, commitment, and customer service. We will continue to connect services to our most vulnerable population and engage the community about the services we offer. Goals. In the face of child support, we are taking a family-centered approach to the administration of the child support program and helping parents share in their legal responsibility to raise their children. In the future, the face of child support could mean parenting time orders that allow child support and visitation orders to be established under one umbrella. A limited service model would allow parents flexibility to select particular services they need from the child support program. Fundamentally, we need to remember that children suffer trauma as a result of changes in the family structure. I recently watched a video of a six-year-old girl whose parents were getting divorced. Her message was a strong one. She said, "Mom and Dad just need to be friends and keep everything steady in a straight line. Otherwise, we will all have monsters in our heart." This is an example of why we are striving to change the face of child support, one family at a time. The child support program is fully funded by the federal and state government and does not draw down from the county general fund. Unfortunately, the program has received flat funding for over a decade. A Budget Methodology Subcommittee has been convened by the State Department this year to work on proposed budget models. We are hopeful that an equitable and sustainable budget model will be implemented over the next two years. Despite these changes, we have continued to help families achieve economic stability. Another challenge. Over the past two decades, the child, child support caseloads have declined across the nation. This is a vivid and concerning trend for the program and families who benefit from our services. If we are considered to be a poverty prevention program, why are parents not accessing our services? There are a number of reasons. One, a parent needs a legal child support order to obtain services. According to 2014 census data, the top two reasons among never-married parents for not obtaining a legal order is belief by the custodial parent that the other parent could not afford to pay, or the other parent is providing what he or she can in support of the child, such as clothing, activities, and childcare. Two, parents that are in a higher-income bracket may believe they don't need our services. They may lack They may lack trust in our program and see it as too bureaucratic and punitive. We can and need to do a better job of education and outreach about who we are and what we do in support of children. At this time, I'd like to share our child support outreach commercial that's currently being aired in San Mateo County networks, which seeks to illuminate our program services and vision of the County of San Mateo.
Child support is when Dad takes me to the park and Mom reads with me.
Child support is more than a check. County of San Mateo Department of Child Support Services' vision is for all parents to responsibly share in providing for their children. We are committed to helping parents work together by focusing on their children's emotional and financial support.
We are child support!
Start the conversation with us and visit us on...
Well, this concludes my presentation. I'd like to commend my entire staff for the excellent work that they perform each day. Thank you to the board for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions? Comments? Supervisor Tissier?
I just want to make a comment. I'm just amazed every year at how much you do. It just gets better and better, and the funding stays flat, and it doesn't seem to affect... Well, it may affect your staff because it's very difficult work, but you continue to do outstanding work, so I have to say kudos to all of you.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We're going to take a seven-and-a-half-minute break now, and we will return in seven-and-a-half minutes. Okay, we're back. Next up is the Department of Housing, Mr. Kenneth Cole, who is the Director of Housing.
Good morning, President Slocum, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Byers, Senior Staff. I'm Kenneth Cole, Director of the Department of Housing. One year ago, I was pretty much to this day, I was standing before you as your new Director of Housing, and I think the biggest confusion was how the county manager had managed to hire a famous designer from New York City. I think President Slocum was particularly confused. Since we've gotten over that level, that problem, we've moved on. And what a year we've had on the issue of affordable housing and the crisis that we have in our community. As you know well, the average rental cost for a two-bedroom unit in San Mateo County is now, on the marketplace, over three thousand dollars, and that crisis is rippling in so many ways. We're reaching a point, I'm reaching a point as a new director of finally doing things for the second time, which is always a good place. This, however, is my first time with this presentation, so I've been looking forward to the opportunity of sharing a bit about the benchmarks and measurables in our department. In particular, this year, of course, the Jobs Housing Task Force, that was a remarkable effort by this board, was really what kept the issue of affordable housing up very high level in our community. So, moving to our mission, and we do pay attention to our mission. The Department of Housing is a catalyst for increasing access to affordable housing, increasing the supply of workforce housing, and support-related community development so that housing permanently exists for people of all income levels and generations in San Mateo County. And we are working on our strategic plan, which I look forward to bringing to you in the near future. Going to jump right into the benchmarks and move through these fairly quickly, and we can go back if there's questions, obviously. The first benchmark for our department is the percent of annual community development block grant funds expended. This chart relates to a ratio, which is a best-practice standard for block grant throughout our country. We're at a solid one-hundred percent. It's not the actual dollars a hundred percent spent, but the ratio with which we draw these dollars down and pump them out into the community. And so, we're certainly getting that job done at the one-hundred percent target. The second is the percent of rental vouchers subsidies utilized, and this is something that you've heard a lot about in terms of our challenges in the Housing Authority. You, as commissioners of the Housing Authority, know this well, that we're trying to get our vouchers out and fully utilized in the community. This measurement is of, not of the number of vouchers, but it's a ninety percent best-practice standard for the utilization of the funds. If you underutilize funds from this federal source, it tends to be rolled back and taken away from you in future years. So, we're working very hard right now in the Housing Authority to keep this to the standard, and as you can see, we're just barely making it, and we can touch on that more later. Another measure in the Housing Authority is the cost per household served, and the target here is to keep our costs of administering vouchers and other forms of housing in the Housing Authority under a hundred dollars per family or household. And as you can see, we've certainly been able to get our costs down recently and are fighting to continue that through efficiencies. The percent of employee evaluations completed annually. As a new manager, this is critically important to me, and I am working right now with my managers and also with my staff. It's a two-way street. I'm encouraging my staff, if they haven't heard from their supervisor, that they bring up the subject, and I'm saying to my managers, "Get the job done. We need to get those evaluations completed." So, I hope to show you progress in this area in this time next year. The percent of outcome and efficiency goals and benchmarks met. So, my understanding here is this is of the five, or excuse me, six key benchmarks for our department, and we've been able to reach three of them. And I would just say that the benchmarks in our area of activity are challenging to find benchmarks that really tell us what's going on. For example, one of the targets that slipped was the leverage ratio of affordable housing investments for each dollar of local funding versus what was built, and that measure was only off just a slight bit from a target of fifteen, taking one million of our dollars and getting fifteen million dollars of benefit to our community. And the actual came out at fourteen-point-three-four million per million invested, so we just slipped a little bit on that and a couple of other measures, so we're at fifty percent from your view. The percent of customer survey respondents rating services good or better, tough measurement in our department. In the Housing Authority, when clients come through for briefings to receive their voucher, for example, we encourage them to fill out a customer satisfaction form of the process that they just went through, and we get high marks. We also take in surveys off of our online website, and those tend to be high, but we're always looking and listening for feedback from our customers. Another important customer, of course, for any department, are our employees, and we have incredibly gifted and dedicated employees, both in the Housing and Community Development and the Housing Authority. So, the ratings here, we're trying to reach a benchmark of eighty percent satisfaction, and this, of course, is collected by the HR department, so we have a little bit more work to do there. And again, I'm really encouraging staff to look at completing those surveys which are out right now. Moving to highlights, and I know you're very familiar, but I wanted to run through a few of the, of looking back. So, in housing production, housing construction, as you well know, it's a very slow pipeline. The good news I have to share with you is measurably picking up steam. It is truly going to continue to grow, and our nonprofit partners are doing a marvelous job of taking our dollars and leveraging. So, looking back over the twenty-fifteen-seventeen highlights, we had Half Moon Village, as you're familiar, on the coast, one-hundred-and-sixty new units, Alma Point Senior Apartments in Foster City. We emphasize here that we're providing thirty-three project-based units from the Housing Authority. The actual total for that project is sixty-five units, but we wanted to touch on the relationship of the Housing Authority and housing production, because the vouchers that we are able to project base are critical to the financing and the leveraging of resources. Again, continuing on the highlights, Sweeney Lane Apartments in Daly City, which was formerly known as Sixty-eight Hundred Mission Street, is now leasing up. We have senior apartments in Menlo Park, University Avenue Senior Apartments in East Palo Alto, and I was just out at the East Palo Alto City Council meeting for a presentation on the Home for All campaign, and they had the announcement that night that the waitlist was open, and I just thought, "Oh, this is perfect timing." So, they were very happy to have those apartments opening in their community. Again, highlights, these are photos of the construction of the Sweeney Lane Apartments on the left, and then the Bellhaven Senior Apartments on Willow Road in Menlo Park on the right. Many of you are very familiar with our efforts for housing for veterans, and again, using precious resources from the Veterans Administration and local resources, both from the county and Menlo Park, and the city of Menlo Park. Willow Housing was created in Menlo Park, actually on Veterans Administration campus, on the campus there, and that's sixty units of housing. One half of them are project-based through the VASH program, the Veterans Supportive Housing Program. The other half are actually project-based, not project-based, they're actually floating vouchers that have settled into those units. So, that building is really leveraging resources to keep those vets housed. Another component is the Colma Veterans Housing Development, which is in development, hasn't broken ground, they're still putting their financings together, but we are project-basing sixty-five vouchers to help them leverage funding as well as using affordable housing funding. A few highlights away from the bricks and mortar. We often point to our voucher waiting list, which is very unique in that it's an open waiting list, it's online, people can see the elements of the program, and then they can sign up online and be in a waiting pool that we can pull from, random selection for housing choice vouchers as they become available in the Housing Authority. We have other efforts this past year included. I wanted to point out the Moving to Work Agreement with HUD was extended for ten years, which is a huge, huge accomplishment, and I won't bore you with the details, but the Moving to Work Agencies across the country had their hands full, and we finally were able, through an act of Congress, to get an extension of ten years of our special status, which you're familiar with. Priorities. Looking ahead, we are firmly involved with other departments of the county in eliminating homelessness by 2020. We are focused on taking resources through the Affordable Housing Fund, Measure A, and getting that out as quickly as possible into the community. We're looking forward to two properties that we are involved in, Midway Village in Daly City and Middlefield Road, which you're familiar with both, but we'll be leveraging, hopefully, bricks and mortar units at both of those locations. And of course, our department will be staffing, assisting other departments in staffing the Home for All San Mateo campaign. The challenges also are almost, you could write the book. I know you're that familiar with the subject, but I want to just highlight again, the reality of our rental market is that it continues to be a runaway, very brutal rental market, and it's popping up everywhere. You're seeing it in employee retention, you're seeing it in the failure to get people out of hospitals, the failure to cut recidivism in the criminal justice system. It just pops up everywhere, and the job housing, so not only do we have the rental market problem, we've got the gap between job creation and housing creation. So, we have our hands full, and that's why I think this is a subject that your board will continue to wrestle with and marshal forces through your departments to fight. Ongoing Measure A, I wanted just to highlight, and it's a bit of a laundry list, and I won't go through them all, because I know you're very familiar, but I wanted to highlight a couple that stand out to me as very unique. The CCG Twenty-One Elements effort is remarkable. I have been out to a couple of the meetings, and that's where we're working in partnership with all twenty cities on housing element planning and leveraging what we're doing as a community, and I just think that's a nerdy thing, it's down in the weeds, it's administrative, but it is quite remarkable. And the Housing Innovation Fund, which you appropriated earlier this year, will be coming back as soon as we can later in the fall with the results of that first round of outcomes from the Innovation Funds, and the Innovation Fund, I should say. Oh, I just managed to put it to sleep. Here we go. Very dangerous. And again, these are familiar Measure A proposals that are multi-year proposals, and we have been getting out, for example, on the mobile home parks, where you have your moratorium on the sale of mobile home parks or the conversion of mobile home parks. We've gotten out as a department to interact with the residents and are learning a lot on the ground. And the Housing Preservation Fund, the ten million dollars that you have allocated to that, will be going out through RFP probably within the next month, and we're looking at really learning how we can quickly leverage and pick off some of these buildings which are getting, you know, getting turned over by investors, flipped, and that's creating the displacement that you're seeing and hearing about from many households in our community. So, in closing, I just want to probably, the one thing I would highlight is the Affordable Housing Fund. So, the Measure A dollars coming through that fund is just doing remarkable things in our community, and we will shortly hit the one-thousand-unit mark in terms of taking Measure A dollars and leveraging the creation or preservation of housing in our community, and that will be a milestone we're looking forward to, and we're really more looking forward to pushing beyond that to even higher numbers. So, in closing, I just wanted to say again that as a new director and also as a new member of this community, I just wanted to thank you for the leadership that you've shown on the issue of affordable housing. It is truly remarkable, and I am up and down the state, working with other housing authorities, with other housing directors, and I just constantly am asked about the innovative things that we're doing here in this community. It's a remarkable collaboration, and I would just say, it's all about collaboration, it's about creativity, and it's about ambition. I think you've been, this county has been remarkably ambitious. You're responding to real needs in your community, and I thank you for the opportunity. You're responding to real needs in your community, and I thank you for the opportunity. You've, you've given me the opportunity to lead an excellent department, a wonderful staff, a very healthy, innovative Housing Authority, and, and a remarkable group of employees. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, for the presentation. Board questions? Comments? Supervisor Horsley?
Well, first of all, I appreciate that, all of your benchmarks, what you showed that you didn't necessarily reach all your benchmarks.
Right.
I, I appreciate that, because oftentimes we, you know, hear all the good things, and, and so, and so you had enough, I guess, self-confidence to show areas where you need to have some continuing improvement, so I appreciate that. The other thing is that you and I both were at a meeting with Congresswoman Jackie Spear, and we had the apartment owners, and Sam Carr. And there were, I think at the time, as I recall, there were about 400 vouchers that were not being utilized, and then we've, you know, the Congresswoman gave them, them a cer- a certain amount of time to be able to get those vouchers utilized. I don't know if this, I know that I've, you and I've been at meetings with apartment owners and asked them to take some of these vouchers, and even, we even have a program to essentially incentivize them, maybe even hold them harmless in some cases. What's the success on that so far?
Well, we are having success, and that effort by Congresswoman Spears and the Apartment Owners Association, and, and Sam Carr, the Realtors Group, has paid dividends. And unfortunately, it's, we're in that situation of, of, the problem is so overwhelming that, that we're, we're tending to tread water, so it's hard to get excited about treading water, although I'd much rather tread water than drown. Having said that, the, the best measure, I think Supervisor Horsley, is that the incentives that the Housing Authority is opening, has opened up are being utilized. So, so we're seeing quite a bit of interest from the landlord community in utilizing those vouchers. The real challenge is that so much of our rental stock is held by small operators. So to make a big number, to push that needle, when you're dealing with a landlord that maybe has five units and only one turnover unit, that, that's the real challenge. So I think where we have to go more is to the property managers, who have control over hundreds of units, and, and really, really get a more energy there to break down the resistance to taking Section 8 vouchers.
Well, we should, we need to get more cooperation from the Apartment Owners Association. They represent those large land owner, or, you know, they, they need to really step up.
I agree.
Thanks.
Other questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Appreciate it. Let's see, item eight is, just noticed that at 1:30, we're going to be doing the presentation of service awards in, at 455 County Center Room 101. And now we'll move to item number nine. Excuse me, that was pulled, item number 10, which is a Measure A matter regarding a fifth, one-time $50,000 grant of specific district funds to the Magical Bridge Foundation. Mr. Calagie?
Yes, thank you very much, President Slocum, members of the board. We are recommending approval of this resolution to give a one-time $50,000 grant from District Four's Measure A allocation to the Magical Bridge Foundation. The funds will be used to purchase an integration carousel for the Magical Bridge Playground in Redwood City's Red Morton Park. The carousel is specifically designed to be accessible at ground level, with the ability to accommodate two wheelchairs that are protected by safety bars. It will be, it will provide an experience for children of all abilities to enjoy the carousel with their families and with other children, and it really is an amazing piece of equipment. The city of Redwood City has approved 1.5 million towards the 3.3 million needed to build the playground. Other sources have been identified for the remaining funds needed to complete the project. Measure A funds will be used to purchase the integration carousel, which is one of several pieces of equipment that will be installed once the playground is built. President Slocum, I believe that you might have a few comments on regard to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Calagie. I just wanted to give a shout out to Lee Michelson, the Director of the Sequoia Healthcare District, because he's the one that pulled the original group together, both Redwood City and the county and others, corporations, to begin to talk about this Magical Bridge Playground. And at that meeting, the, the mother that founded the Magical Bridge Playground and Foundation in Palo Alto was there, and the, just the stories of the kids that visit the Palo Alto Park. It was very emotional to hear those stories of those moms, and so I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to contribute this $50,000. And I, and I know Lee Michelson and the Healthcare District is going to kick in some money additionally. I just want to thank Lee for his leadership and their board for their leadership on this matter.
So do we need to, we need a, what do you call that? A motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Magical Bridge Foundation $50,000 grant.
Second. Okay, been moved to second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, matter passes. We move on to item number 11, which is the County Managers' Report.
Yes, President Slocum and members of the board, thank you. You do have the report in front of you. I just wanted to highlight one thing for our listening audience, and that is the Countywide Jobs Housing Task Force launching of a website. As you all remember, Home for All San Mateo County is an initiative launched from the efforts of the Countywide Closing the Jobs Housing Gap Task Force. And they have unveiled a public website this month. The website gives stakeholders, officials, and the community information and tools for addressing housing supply and affordability challenges. And it can be found at www.homeforallsmc.com. And I would encourage everybody to go there and, and take a look, it really is a great website. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to board member reports, and maybe we could start with Supervisor Groom?
Thank you, thank you, President Slocum. I have a couple of adjourned memories. The first is for Ruth Steiner. She, she passed away on September 14th. She was born in San Francisco in May of 1918. She has been a great contributor, has been a great contributor to the county of San Mateo. She was a trustee on the San Mateo Union High School District, trustee on the Hillsborough School District, member of the California State School Board. She was a member of the, of the Mills Peninsula Foundation, the San Mateo County Historical Museum, a, a long, long time board member, active in the local Girl Scouts, and also at, at the Old Poplar Center, which is now Community Gate Path. She was one of the original volunteers who created the Halloween Haunted House, which was a fundraiser for many, many years for, for, for Poplar Center. And she will, she has really been a great leader in this county, and, and more than that, a great example for young people coming up and joining boards. I was on the Community Gate, the Poplar Center Board with her, and a new board member, and she really always reached out to help the new board members become really good board members. So she really wanted to share all of her knowledge, and she's a great, great contributor to San Mateo County. Bob Deskey died also on September the 28th. Longtime San Mateo resident, began his legal career in San Francisco at the, as a deputy city attorney. Then he had his own law practice in San Mateo County for many, many years in downtown San Mateo. He was president of the Baywood Homeowners Association. He too was on the Board of the County Historical Association, who was on the San Mateo County Growth Policy. And a member of the, as I said, a member of the, longtime member of the Historical Association, helped with a lot of the fundraising campaigns, and his wife just passed away a couple of years ago, and, and he will join her, I'm sure. And lastly, Valerie Goines. She was a Kenyatta College, and, and among other things, but her, her great contribution to this county was in early childhood education. She was on the Childcare Coordinating Council for many years, ran the Skyline and Kenyatta College Programs for early childhood education teachers, and was a recipient of a Kent Award from the San Mateo School, School Board for her, her work in early childhood education. And there is, there was no funeral planned for her, but there was a lovely memorial service in late September. One last thing. The, my annual, part, eighth annual San Mateo County Active Conference is, this year is called Parks Forever, and we have three great speakers. The Director of California State Parks, Lisa Mangat, Erin Roth, who is the Acting General Superintendent of the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, and our own Marlene Finley, Director of Parks. And parts of this program is to celebrate the 100th anniversary of national parks in the United States. It is Friday, October 21, at the Belmont Library, and you're all welcome.
Thank you. Supervisor Horsley?
Just to adjourn a memory of Bob Forsythe. He was a retired member of the Sheriff's Department. He started the Sheriff's Department as a cadet, and then he was promoted Deputy Sheriff and eventually Sergeant. What I remember best about him is that when we initiated a Electronic Home Monitoring Program, he, he was kind of a big, this guy, he was really a hardworking guy, really, he took everything he did really very serious. And this program was kind of unique, and it was one of the first in the, of its kind in the area. He went around to every single judge with the equipment to explain how it worked and why it worked. And they developed, actually, never really was a very big program, but it was mostly designed for people who have significant illnesses, and worked out really well in terms of saved the county money, and it was actually a pretty good way for people who had catastrophic illnesses to actually, you know, do their time in a, in a way that, you know, was, satisfied the sentence and at the same time satisfied the courts. He was just an all-around good guy, and I know he will be missed by his family.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissier?
I don't have any adjourned memories, but I do have a couple announcements. Just a final reminder, that Tuesday, October 25th, will be the 29th Annual Seniors on the Move Conference at the Event Center. Registration has begun, and you can register online by visiting Congresswoman Spear's website at spear.house.gov. And we have two more upcoming Age Well Drive Smart seminars, one in Daly City, Tuesday, October 18th, at the Westlake Community Center at 9:00, and Belmont, Thursday, November 10th, at Twin Pines Lodge at 9:30.
Thank you. Supervisor Pye?
I am excited to remind everyone that Peninsula Clean Energy launched on Monday. So 20% of our residents, all of our small businesses and medium-sized businesses are now, have the opportunity to receive substantially cleaner energy, 75% greenhouse gas-free, 50% renewable, and if you're willing to pay $2, about $2 extra a month, you can have 100% renewable. So Jam Pepper sent an email around to all the board, if you want to get the word out. Everyone will be enrolled by April, but we've got the first phase now officially underway. We're going to have a formal event later, later in the week to mark that launch. And while, again, as I mentioned, this first phase is for 20% of the residents, anyone can sign up early, should they, should they choose.
Thank you. I have no report, so at this moment, at this time, we'll move to closed session, and then we'll reconvene?
Well, actually, I was going to say, given the, there's two closed session items, and given the nature of both those closed session items, I'm just going to be asking the board for direction, and there'll be no reportable action that needs to be reported out, so I don't think there's any need to reconvene.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.